All right, since we already started the meeting earlier, we're just gonna go back into regular session out of executive session. Resolve that the Board of Education return to regular session at 6:15. Need a motion, please?
Motion, John.
John? Second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, presentations. Mr. Mayor.
So, the first presentation is to one of the people in our district who had a very, very difficult job for thirty, almost thirty-five years in the district.
That's amazing.
And I always say, we all have difficult jobs, but you know, it's tough to manage a classroom when you have twenty, twenty-five kids right in front of you, but when you're driving a bus and you've got thirty-five kids behind you, that's a, that's a very difficult task. So, getting our kids to and from school safely in field trips and sporting events for thirty-five years, we can't pay too much. Great service, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Athletics, Mr. Prichet.
Do you want a minute? You want me to go and then you can go? Let's go.
Are you gonna use this thing? Are you using this thing? Is that what I'm saying?
We, why don't you guys, we could start the budget presentation. We don't need to, we're not using the screen for that. So, you guys work on the login. Will, Jen and I will start with the budget. We'll move down to topic three. So, Jen's been working really hard with all the different numbers that come in, and I think they're all, they're all in, Jen?
They're all in.
They're all in, for our tax, what do we call the two percent tax cap number? So, Jen, why don't you take away and tell everybody where we are and how we got there?
Where we're at, we're at a 1.91% levy increase for this coming year. This does have to be submitted to New York State Comptroller's Office as of March first. So, I do have all the numbers in from all the different areas that we need, and that is where we're putting in at, which this was put into your portal this afternoon, too, I don't know if anybody looked at it, but.
The total calculation, all the numbers were put in, was put into the portal?
Right, if you really wanna get into the nitty-gritty of the math, but what it equates to, what 1.91% equates to is an increase in the levy of $440,959. So, that's what we're looking at to increase our levy by this year. So, that's what I will report to New York State for March first. If there are, I can make changes to it thereafter. I just have to call the New York State Comptroller and open it back up, but if need be, I can make changes after that.
So, that's the number we would go out to the, to the tax base, or to the taxpayers with, 1.91. If we wanted to go above that, we would need a super majority. Very difficult to pass a super majority. So, I mean, super majority means you'd have to, sixty percent of the taxpayers would have to say yes. We're not proposing to go above that number, but I don't know if anybody has any questions about that number, any concerns about that number. We don't vote on that number, but we'll look, we want you to know that that's the number, and we can modify it if the board's saying, go above, go below, whatever.
Any questions at all?
Any questions on that?
Concerns?
Any concerns, 1.91? Okay.
It is, yes, it was two point seven four.
You will see in our budget presentations how we've really tried to smooth that number to keep it somewhere between, you know, point seven and point, and below three over the years. So, that's, so we don't have those big swings.
Yeah, it's been very consistent. Um, and you're trying, you don't want big swings in your levy, um, in class, love problems. So, we try and keep it very consistent. So, the last five years, it's been two point five six, two point seven six, two point six eight, two point seven four, and we're at a 1.91 this year, so.
Okay. From a budget development process, been listening. People generally aren't shy, listening to numerous people about, as we look at our budget and, you know, what are the areas that need to be addressed. So, a couple outstanding issues. When you start seeing things getting, getting hired, you've gotta understand there's sometimes things we, we didn't, we weren't able to hire for that were in, that are in the budget, either in the budget from a long time ago, and we're just gonna find the staff, or in the budget maybe even last year, and we didn't find the position. There's also retirements, and you'll be, and you might be like, well, you know, we didn't talk about hiring new health teachers. Well, there, when we have retirements, we fill those. So, from an outstanding issue, two, there's two outstanding positions that, at least two, but there's two that come to mind that have been a struggle to, to hire. One is the Cumberland Head Associate Principal, and the other is a Family and Consumer Science. The Family and Consumer Science has been a position we've had here, but we've just had a hard time securing a certified applicant. So, that's, those are outstanding positions that are in the budget that we're taking a good, hard look at, what's out there. Retirements this year, there's two health teachers that are retired, and three elementary teachers that have retired. Bus drivers, one, more than one bus drivers have retired. There's aides that resign, you know, there's, there's always that flux with aides and monitors and cafeteria folks and custodians, but those are, those are some basic retirements that we will be filling. And then potentially new, one interesting piece in the budget, which we've never seen before, and it's always fun to figure out what they mean when they, when they put something new in the budget, is this year, they, they've allocated, they've increased our foundation aid, but then they've put it, what, they carved out a piece of that and said, "This amount has to be used for high-impact tutoring." And we've never seen that language before, "high-impact tutoring." So, the question is, well, what do they mean by "high-impact tutoring"? So, it's hard to find what they mean by "high-impact tutoring." So, we went to the law, and I gave Jen a copy of the law. In, in, in the law, what essentially it says is, and I'm sure there'll be guidance coming out that might not even correspond particularly well with the law, but what it says for "high-impact tutoring" is essentially tutoring or interventions that can happen before school, after school, or during school. We've always had some monies available because of our Title I for before and after school and during school interventions. So, what I'm, what I'm proposing to have the discussion about is taking that, so, oh, sorry, the dollar amount this year is, oddly enough, it's $300,000 for Beatman Town for high-impact tutoring. Now, I say that oddly enough because two years ago, our total state aid increase during the first year of COVID was $45,000. That was a year where we're faced with cuts, and then we also were told we're gonna lose 20% of state aid if Trump got elected. So, that was a really difficult year, $45,000 increase. This year, we get $300,000 for high-impact tutoring. So, I, I am proposing that we look at hiring certified teachers or teaching assistants, depending on the applicant pool out there, at, at least one at each elementary school and the middle school. And depending on the cost and the position type, because a TA is less than a teacher, but it depends on the applicant pool out there, it could be more. So, that would probably give us a little bit of flexibility, but we, to have tutoring before or after school, but we always had, we already have dollars set aside for tutoring before and after school, and it's hard to, hard to fill that currently. So, that's, if you, you know, that's what we're proposing for the high-impact tutoring. That could all change as, as guidance comes out about that language. With the law, reading the law, that's where we are right now. We need to resolve the middle school and elementary school art schedule, what that might mean, if that mean, we might need to hire somebody else or a portion of somebody else. Might need to hire some special education staff. If we do add another pre-K, not another pre-K room, but if we, if we change a pre-K room to the, to meet the waiver that we have for special ed, then we would need itinerant services, so we might need some more of the itinerant service providers in the, in our already existing room if we identified a, a room as a pre-K special education room through our waiver we stated. We're looking at potentially two counselors. One, we've had good luck with the early crisis identification counselors through BHSN. We're also looking to hire a traditional counselor. Seek additional Department of Social Service for preventative care. As you may or may not know, we, we have been given ideas on how to handle attendance issues. A truancy officer is not a position in Clinton County. It's never been a position in the Clinton County Personnel Department. But the preventative care worker, the DSS preventative care workers are people who work with those families quite, quite closely and their, and their elementary principals feel like we get a really good bang for our dollar with those folks going into homes, helping those families, you know, do what they need to do to get their kids to school or, and do a whole bunch of other things for the families. Already talked about the potential AIS providers through the set aside, potential secretarial supports, and then we have to be ready for adversity. We never know how adversity is gonna hit, but we do know it's hitting because there's a new, how, new housing is available in the district over by where the new farm, mega farm, I'm gonna call it. Is it, is that the right term, Jen? Okay. It's being built, and we're getting a lot of ELL, English Language Learners, that are, are being sent to us because there's not migrant workers working there. And then we, so with that addition, and with the addition over by Hanaford, we have to watch and see, watch our enrollment data. So, we have to be ready for adversity, which we are. We wanna finalize in the budget. We started last year finalizing moving, which was previously grant-funded into the budget, so it's a permanent, well, it's permanent until it gets, until it gets cut somewhere. The college, paying for college credits for, for the students, AP college credits or the CAP college credits. And then the other item that's new to us is the next-generation science standards are investigation-based, so there's a lot of different experiments, I'm gonna call them, that need to be done, or investigations that need to be done by students and teachers. And those materials are, they're not overly costly, but you're talking about, oh, you're talking, oh, once they get fully implemented, you're talking a lot of kids, over a thousand kids, doing these experiments, so you need a lot of materials every single year. So, having a budget line for those materials is certainly gonna be important, so every year, you're not trying to scramble to figure out where you're gonna get everything from baking soda to food coloring to whatever else you might need.
On that issue, is there going to be a need to addition the equipment in science?
Yeah, and that's, so, materials and supplies. So, equipment for us is anything over $5,000, so we hope that, we don't need multiple $5,000 pieces for this, but materials and supplies would be, anything, telescopes, kind of microscopes, telescopes, who knows?
Well, a lot of the equipment, which has been very, it's not really equipment, um, stuff, has been ordered through the SIRSA money this year.
Yes, we're using grant money this year, but you gotta build it in your budget, because that money's gone.
Yeah, but all the gummy bears and the sunflower seeds and everything else that they use for all of these experiments is the stuff that we're gonna play with.
And they make, they assure you nobody's eating the gummy bears?
They might try and help.
So, yeah, there's a lot of different, you just need a lot of different materials and supplies, so. So, those are some of the early entries into our budget considerations. I'll open it up to the board for other considerations. Had a good meeting yesterday?
If someone were to ask why the percent 1.91 is so much different than last year?
There's not a full lot of differences. One is the purchase of the buses, if they go up significantly. So, that's, that's probably the only real significant difference.
Did we purchase three buses last year, Jen?
We purchased four, but the cost of buses.
Oh, sorry, the cost went up.
So, so we, in the calculation, you use any capital purchase, which is premises. So, last year, we used five hundred thousand. This year, we're up to six hundred and forty-one thousand for buses. So, that, that's really the only big, our swing we have was our bus purchases. Um, everything else is very, very consistent. We do that on purpose, obviously, to try and keep these numbers consistent. The cost of buses is something out of our control, so that's really the only large swing.
But is that, my question, so last year, the percent was what?
Two point seven.
So, this year's low. So, someone were asking you, why is it lower?
I had to look through the whole calculation.
Is there, no, is there, is there something that, obvious, is there more spending?
Capital exclusion.
It doesn't have anything to do with the calculation.
So, what is, what is, nothing obvious that, just outside?
The only difference, literally, if you were to look at all of my math, is the purchase of, the higher cost of buses.
Jen, do they refer to that as a capital exclusion?
Yes.
So, you'd say our capital exclusions is higher
Yep.
this year than other years, and that has an inverse relationship to the,
Right.
to the taxpayers. So, higher that, the higher the capital exclusion goes, the lower,
The lower your rate goes.
the lower you can ask for the taxpayer.
We have to have an answer ready.
And that's really, that, if you were to look at the backup of my calculations on the line sheets, that'll be the only big swing you see is the bus.
From a budget development process, anything else for consideration? Padre, anything else? Seeing none. We have talked at the meeting, the last couple meetings, about our long-term financial outlook, which we do every year. It looks strong. We are adjusting our fund balance down a little bit each year. I think this year, we're down $100,000 from last year, and we're gonna be asking the board to put on, in our budget, $2 million of the fund, of fund balance into this year's budget. And this is a strategic move so that we don't have big swings. Sometimes, school districts might put four or five million, if they have a situation, into one year, and then, and then you can't find that money in subsequent years, so you have to taper it off. I know two million sounds a lot. We're over $50 million budget, so that's a couple, a few percent. Does the board have, is there any, any questions or considerations for us regarding the allocation of fund balance? It's very, I think traditionally, we've been, for a number of years, we're at 1.7, 1.8, 1.9, we're at two. Their fund balance is higher just recently because of, we weren't able to fill a lot of positions, and we weren't able to do a lot of things over COVID. So, things that cost money when we weren't able to do, so that, that did drive some fund balance. And we're gonna talk in a minute about Operations Committee's work on the capital project, and how we can fund that with no new costs to the taxpayers utilizing fund balance. Lastly, our enrollment. I'm gonna give you a really good document in the coming days for our enrollment and class sizes. We'll share it with the board at the next meeting, and you'll see that our enrollment's high, is the highest point it's been since 2008. And the elementary, you know, is, as we submitted this to State Ed, the elementary is the highest it's been since, since, I think, 2004. And we used to have three elementary buildings, and now we have two, right, because we had West Chez-Zee. So, that's part of the reason why we need the new addition onto the ES. But you'll see the enrollment and the class size information, it's, it's well, very well done, and it's something we look at and keep an eye on. And like I said, that work isn't done. I think we're getting two new ELL students in tomorrow. And, you know, we're always looking at kids that are coming and going, so we're keeping an eye on enrollment. But it's, it's large, but it's, it's slowly climbing up above 2,000. Any questions on property tax cap, budget development, fund balance, enrollment?
How far in the future do you project your enrollment? Do you do it like in five years?
Yeah. So, you look at live, one of the things you look at, well, two things, I think, are the, are the big drivers. Live births, so every year, you take a look at what's happening in the hospitals, right, what's around here in hospitals. And then the other thing is you look at housing, right? Housing development drives people into your district, usually. They usually don't move from one street over to that street. They move, you know, more often, they move into the district, so we look at that. Then the other thing you kinda watch is your, your pre-K, and how many people wanna get into pre-K, and then your K enrollment. And what you, you know, like, you, you'll have our grid. Chelsea, does everybody have, is it in the, the enrollment grid? Is that in the portal? I mean, it doesn't have to be right now. Okay, so, so we will give you this grid again. We have a grid that goes back to 2,000, I think to 2,000, and it, and it, you can track K, and then the next year when they're first grade. So, our enrollment will go, the other, sorry, another thing that will drive up our enrollment is actually our two smallest class sizes are our junior class and our senior class. Those are actually small classes. Everything else is 150, 155, one, high 140s. Those classes are 133 and 120. And that, those classes kinda drove some of the anxiety back in the day that we were, we're gonna be really small. Everything was trending small, because we were looking at live births and these other things. But since then, we've had a lot more development in our district. Housing's gone up a lot in Beatman Town. And, I don't know, just getting the kids for sure. But we keep an eye on it. As a matter of fact, we had to do a study and submit it to State Ed as part of our cap, as part of our capital project as well. So, it doesn't, and that study showed, it's just gradual. We're not looking at a big boom, but that could happen. Somebody puts a development in and puts a hundred homes in, which we haven't seen in a long time in Clinton County, but they could do that easily around here. That would drive, drive families. Okay, with that, I'm gonna hand it over.
Hold on. Does anybody else have any questions on budget? Because we've had a lot of conversations about support, staff, mental health, academic grading, the district.
You guys are looking for a high-impact tutor, you said the state's gonna give $300,008. Now, what if they don't continue giving that? Are we gonna do away with that position?
Yeah, it'll be a board decision. It will, when it stops showing up as a carve-out, then the board will have to figure out what do they wanna do. Right?
Did you guys hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, you couldn't hear me there for a little bit. As far as items to discuss when it comes to the budget, I did send an email to the board. I hope everybody got it. It was an article that came out about a yield plan that was implemented in Platteburg. The revenue that was developed from it and how much it costs, I think that's something that would be beneficial for us if it.
I did, yes. Just so you know, that the cafeteria budget is not part of this budget.
Okay.
Okay, they're two totally separate, the cafeteria functions, functions on its own, and if need be, we support them if they are running in.
I understand, thank you.
So, that's how that works. And we did look at, I read the article, I had read the article in the Sun, you know, news. Talked to Roxy about it all. I don't know exactly what you're looking for as far as what direction you wanna go, or?
My, my question was, what was the cost of implementing something like that, and if it was, if it seemed beneficial, is that something we wanted to consider? But if it's not part of this particular budget conversation, then that's a conversation we can move to another date.
That's fine.
Yeah, but it's still a budget conversation, right? Yeah, so I just wanna just make sure, so this, so does this include any kind of increases staffing for this year to address any issues? I mean, I know that, you know, we've gone through the academic presentations with grades of ECSD, and there's some areas we're doing great, some areas with recent improvement, and there's been conversations about, about mental health, the support, so. So, does this budget include anything to address some of those staff concerns?
Staff concerns? Like, mental health, did you say?
Just in general.
I mean, I mentioned two counselors.
Whatever issues we need help with at the district, does the budget include anything to address, you know, any issues?
So, I, I think, when you, when I think mental health, I think supports for families, and we talked about the preventative care worker. When I think mental health, I like, my mind really goes to counseling, and we talked about two, two new counselors. We can go back and look. I don't know that we've ever hired two new counselors at the same time. So, yep, that, we think of attendance, I think of preventative care worker. I also think, when I think of supports to buildings, I think of the associate principal's spot that's been, that helps teachers, students, families, helps the buildings run better. When I think of academic supports, I think of three new AIS providers. I think, when I look at principals and I say three new AIS providers, I usually see smiles. So, I think that, that's helpful, even though it's odd that we're getting $300,000 for that, but it's, it's not bad at all. So, yeah, I think, I think everybody's suggestions were based on that. We, I think somebody mentioned SEL. I think each building has sent out notification to their buildings, looking to take another hard look at our, to form a committee, a district-wide committee, to look at our SEL program, our social emotional learning program, which is currently top 20 supplemented by Zones of Regulations. And that committee, if they say we're gonna, whatever that committee's final recommendation is, will be brought to me, and I will look at it, and if it's reasonable, we, I will bring that to the board. And we, and that, and we will either double down on the current SEL program, or if there's a new program, like, some people like the Positivity Project, that was, that was the last one cut, I guess, so to speak, at the, at the, with the last committee meeting a number of years ago. Like, if, if the district needs a Zones of Regulations or Heroes, somebody help me here, Heroes.
Sweethearts and Heroes.
Sweethearts and Heroes. The Sweethearts and Heroes, those are not cheap, but those are an investment into SEL programs. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but I, I guess I'm trying to say, yeah, for sure.
You know, I think if we're, when we talk budget, it's good to talk about how. You know, I think if we want to talk budget, it's good to talk about how, how the budget can be used to improve in health and, and address any concerns we have.
These two counselors, where are we looking at placing them? Are these specifically crisis counselors, school counselors? Are they going to be working full-time schedules or, you know, limited schedules throughout the week? What's the thoughts there?
So the thought there is that, as I mentioned, we've had good luck with our B H. So we have, right now, we have one B H S N counselor who's a first responder to crisis at the high school and middle school. And then we have one person who shared between both elementary schools. So one day that person, it's a she, is at one school and the next day they're at the other school. It might work as simple as that. So the value of having that person handle the crisis and allowing our counselors to coun- to counsel more often and our psychologists to, you know, stay on their workload has been valuable. So that's one addition. And then another addition is a new counselor, a traditional, I'm going to call it traditional B T A counselor. I don't want to get into the idea in February of where we'll place that counselor in June or September. But it is a traditional counselor to help kids. So that's, and that's where we are right now. This is a developmental process. So I don't know what the other, that's why we're asking these questions, right? What are the other, other things that you want us to consider? Did I, did I get everything? Patrick, did I get everything on that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess seeing how the, the eight-one-one classrooms specifically are at the Beaventown main campus, I'd like us to consider, you know, those B H S N counselors, like you said, have been incredibly beneficial. And I'd like us to consider, and I know you don't want to discuss it right now, but making an extra resource, you know, for those eight-one-one classrooms at the Beaventown main campus.
So last year, it was my proposal to move an eight-one-one to Cumberland Head. And I listened to everybody and we didn't do it for a number of reasons. This year, those reasons that I wrote down and listened to don't seem to have panned out as, as, as solid reasons to keep one, eight-one, keep both eight-on-ones at V E S. So next year, this is not really a budget issue, but maybe it is based on your question. Next year, we can expect a eight-one-one at Cumberland Head and an eight-one-one at V E S.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, question on the three hundred thousand high impact tour and set aside.
Yep.
Was that a set aside that all districts got something?
No, I, I think you had to have a certain amount of foundation aid increase and then you, then they started carving pieces of that out.
Because I'm just wondering if that's the state's attempt to help school districts attack the attendance and learning gap.
It's the learning gap. It is, it's attacked the learning gap. Or the lack, the lack that kids were in school during COVID, right? Yep. And that's what it's for, correct? So we don't know, then they'll say when it goes away, but it very well could. Anything else for the good? Again, this is a developmental process. We could see when we start costing things out, we start seeing who's applying, and the dominoes start to fall, things can change. But right now, we're comfortable moving forward with those ideas of seeing how can we implement those? And like I said, we could come back to you in March and April with a few more ideas or things could get caught. Or, you know, who, who knows what's out there? But this is a first step, first step in the implementation process, in the budgeting process. With that, are we done? Hand it over to Associate Principal Frichette, Administrator of Athletics.
Good evening, everybody. The reason I asked for the lights off is when Mr. Mannix asked me to present tonight, I, I wanted, I was thinking about the best way to convey some of the things I wanted to share with you tonight. And a lot of it involves some images, so I thought the lights off, you can see the pictures a little higher. So I'd like to start off introducing myself, Justin Frichette, Associate Principal, Administrator of Athletics. When I, when I thought about doing this, this project, this presentation tonight, it brought me back to a phone call that I had when I was in my classroom at Chezee as a classroom teacher. And Mr. Mannix asked me to be involved in an athletics committee to look at athletics. And I know a lot of people in this room spent a lot of time and energy looking at the athletic department, looking at ways that we can improve and get better, that growth mindset. And it took me back to some of the conversations that we had in those meetings. I know a lot of it was done, hydrated, it was done over the summer, it was done throughout COVID. And we came up with a lot of things in that document. And today I just want to highlight those things and show you in action the results of that work. And I'm excited to present to you tonight. I hope you enjoy the presentation. The first, the first thing that I think that is really important to look at is participation. When it comes to athletics, I think student participation is, is a major factor in some of the data points we need to look at. If you look at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fall and winter sports, I'm comparing these two because these are the metrics that we have for this year. We have our winter signups obviously have already happened, and we have our fall, which have already occurred. So if you look at two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, you can see where our participation rates were and you can kind of see how they've grown. And I think having more students involved in athletics obviously allows us to be able to interact with those students in a way that allows us to accomplish the goals that are in that document that we worked so hard on. So what does participation look like in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three? In the fall, we had three hundred and twenty-four student athletes, one hundred and thirty-five in the middle school and one hundred and eighty-nine in the high school. In the winter season, we have two hundred and seventy-eight student athletes, seventy-eight in the middle school and two hundred in the high school. One of the reasons numbers in the winter tend to be a little, little smaller is the size of teams typically is not as large. When you look at a sport like football, where you can roster a lot of athletes, the roster sizes are typically much smaller in the winter, in the winter sports. So in total, we've had six hundred and two athletes participate in fall and winter athletics. And for me, I want to continue to see that bar graph grow. But if you compare two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, both fall and winter were, were really doing well in regards to maintaining our numbers in athletics and recovering from COVID. I think one of the things that bothered me the most as a teacher was watching our students kind of withdraw. They didn't have that vigor in their favor, they didn't have that excitement that we used to see pre-COVID. So being able to get that back was really important to me and have them be excited to be back in school and participating in athletics. So the other part of participation is creating opportunities for our students. When we have opportunities to be able to create new avenues for them to showcase their talents, it's something we've really prided ourselves on in the last, last two years. Some of the programs we've added, our air rifle, which has been very successful here, our ski club, which is a partnership with Platteburg and Chezee. And I know Mr. Mannix offered other districts to take part in that. We have a great partnership with Barretown and have done a wonderful job in, in building that program. We currently have over sixty students involved in that program. Girls' flag football is going to be a new sport offered here this year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And unified basketball will be coming back to Beaventown this year. It's a sport I'm very excited to be a part of and I figure it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for our student athletes. So go back to participation. If the goal is to continue to grow, how do we do that? We offer more opportunities for our kids. We always look at student interest surveys before we decide to jump into one of these. I can tell you air rifle is ranked in, in the back, your husband is one of the coaches of that program. And ninety-six students show interest in air rifle prior to creating that opportunity for our students. So I just, seeing the faces on the bottom right, you see a picture of our ski club, our air rifle students. It's just nice to see that look back, back in their faces. Scholar athletes, in our winter season, if you look at scholar athletes in New York State, what is a scholar athlete team? Scholar athlete teams are varsity only. And in order to qualify to be a scholar athlete team, you need seventy-five percent of your roster. Seventy-five percent of your roster has to have a ninety or higher GPA. So when we look at our fall sports, winter sports, those calculations will be done in early March. We had seven gymnastics, boys soccer, girls soccer, volleyball, football, girls cross country and boys cross country. Seven out of our eight varsity sports in the fall recognized as NISFA scholar athlete teams. So super proud of this. When we look at athletics, we don't want to look at just the championships and the banners in the gym. We want to see what are our students doing in the classroom? And this is a great metric. If you go back to our work as, as an athletic committee that we did in our document, the policy and the goals that we set forward, I think this definitely is a wonderful accomplishment that we, we should celebrate. Code of conduct violations. One of the things I, I worked hard on this year was really in our coaches' meetings, discussing with our coaches how we can start declining in our code of conduct violations here at Beaventown. Seven code of conduct violations in twenty, 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 twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. We had eight this year so far, we've had one. And when I did this presentation, zero, this happened recently unfortunately. But we see those numbers declining and I think having those conversations with our student athletes, understanding our student athletes probably don't read the code of conduct. And how do we better educate our athletes and our coaches to communicate these things throughout the year? So super proud of this. And I think, again, that's just another metric of the work that goes on, not only in the athletic department, but with all the individuals here who are administrators and teachers in our district to support the things that we do. Athletics, we always talk about championships. Super proud of how the kids are performing, obviously in the, in the pool, on the field, on the track. In the fall, we had our boys soccer, girls soccer, football and volleyball teams all participate and advance to the sectional finals. Anytime a team gets to the sectional finals, it's very hard to get to that point in the season. And to have that many teams get there was super rewarding. I know for all of us and something we're very proud of. In the winter so far, again, a lot of the playoffs have not started yet. We've had three varsity wrestlers win the sectional meet and move on to the state tournament. Our team, wrestling team finished second. I talked to Coach Gadway today and super proud of the effort and the growth of the athletes throughout the year. Two swimmers, on the bottom right, you see Alex Paris and Mr. Hagador. They swim for us Able Valley. We have a merger with them. And they both won two different sectional events in the swimming competition and will be going to states. Girls bowling, girls bowling was sixty-four and all. Sixty-four and all this winter, C D A C champions and section seven champions. And their team will be going on to the state tournament. We also have two state bound boys bowlers. So a lot of these pictures are very recent. You can see our wrestlers and our indoor track team. I think the addition, the addition and the recruitment of really good coaches is something that was a big focus of that committee. And when you can add people to your staff like Kathy Champagne, Chris Waterbury, I think it just helps, again, accomplishing some of the metrics that we're looking at here today.
Boys, boys, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so these are just some more pictures. I didn't have enough room on the screen to share with you. And again, we're not even through the winter season. Another team I'd like to call out is our air rifle team. Our air rifle team is doing absolutely amazing. They were very close to winning a sectional championship as well. So super proud of, of the accomplishments here. And there's a picture of our bowlers yesterday at North Valley. It's just, the looks and the faces is really what I want. I was hoping that you could absorb tonight, is seeing that look back on our student athletes' faces. And that's so rewarding when you see the joys of hard work. The other part of athletics, which I think is very important, is the giving back. If we look at our district mission, being a quality contributor to society and self. Self would be your academics, self would be the championships and the hard work and the personal accomplishments and accolades that you achieve. Being a contributor to society is giving back. And this is the second part of my presentation that I wanted to share with you. These are different programs that have done different community service events this year. Okay, so this is, this is based solely on this year. Our girls and boys soccer team raised one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. It was split between the North Country chapter of the Guardian of the Britain and the C D P H Fitzpatrick Cancer Center. Those teams did that in unison. And you can see the, the looks and the faces. I know Ms. Parloam is probably looking at her daughter. That is why we do what we do. As I started putting this together, as I told you, I had a lot of charts and graphs. And I said, this is not what I want this to look like. I want you to see the impact that athletics has on our student athletes and the generation. You look at Mr. Chapman with one of our young eagles. That is what athletics is about, and passing that on to the next generation. Mr. Beebe, I don't know if your son knows how to drive a fire truck, but he's in the driver's seat.
Looks dangerous.
He's good to go. Super proud of our kids. Girls' basketball, girls' basketball did a couple, couple different events for us this year. They did a breakfast with Santa and something our boys hockey team typically does, but we unfortunately had a game that morning that they didn't have to schedule. And the girls' basketball, J V and varsity team stepped up and immediately took over and was able to raise sixteen hundred dollars for Relay for Life with the partnership with Applebee's. And then they did the balling for Cure, two thousand dollars raised for the Fitzpatrick Cancer Center. And those are just some images of them in the kitchen at Applebee's. And basically what happens is you sell tickets, families come in, have a pancake breakfast and all proceeds go to Relay for Life. Our boys hockey team, we just conducted our ninth annual Hannah's Hope Night. We raised over twenty-four hundred dollars for Hannah and her fund. Unfortunately, Hannah and her family came up from Florida to visit and they got sick on the plane. So we're not able to attend. But Ms. Favreau, Hannah's aunt, who's a former teacher, educator here at Beaventown, retired from Beaventown, stepped in to represent her family. And Mr. Mannix stepped in to drop the ceremonial puck drop. And this year was the first year we included our cheerleaders in the act. It was absolutely awesome to see them at a hockey game. It was different having them behind me. I've never heard cheerleaders cheer the basketball cheers and the football cheers at a hockey game. But just including our student athletes and again, looking at the expressions on the faces and, and teaching them that lesson of giving back to their community. Super proud to be a part of Beaventown. And over the last nine years, we've raised over twenty-seven thousand dollars for Hannah and her family. The other part of this is reaching out to our community. I, I truly feel we have a lot of people in our community that want to support our athletic department. We obviously have our athletic budget, but how can we do more? How can we reach out to different organizations and have them support our athletic department? Whitetail's Unlimited stepped up this year. I know Mr. Gadway had brought a question forward. In air rifle, I learn something new about air rifle every week. In air rifle, the pants, the shooting pants that they wear to the students on the screen, a vital part of being able to play that sport. Those pants are also very expensive. So we were able to work with Whitetail's Unlimited and were able to outfit the entire team with a twenty-five hundred dollar donation. Every one of our student athletes was able to get a pair of air rifle pants, able to participate in that sport. So just super excited about the opportunity to partner with our community members and our community relationships that we currently have to be able to provide extra opportunities and supplies for our kids. Applebee's every year, it's a partnership I've had for many years. They donate three thousand dollars for us to be able to host our own tournament here at Beaventown. And they're just some images for the year. The gentleman that you see in the middle, his name is Adam. I have a player in my team, Keegan Rodier, that is his uncle. And he has become the official mascot for hockey team. So if you ever come to our games and you see the boys go down to the corner after a game, they're celebrating with Adam, who also has a career. So again, just another opportunity for our kids to, to do some really good work in the community. Girls' flag football, girls' flag football is, there's a big push by the N F L and the NFL teams in New York to have girls' flag football. Girls' flag football had fifty-one teams in New York State last year. This year, they will be over one hundred and fifty teams in New York State. The New York Giants, I've had three Zoom calls with representatives from the Giants. They have donated twenty-eight hundred dollars to our school district along with all the supplies, the cones, the bags, the flags. Twenty-eight hundred dollars will be used for uniforms to give this sport up and running at no cost to our district. So Ms. Parloam just gave me the W nine for our school and the New York Giants will be sending us twenty-eight hundred dollars to give this up and running. So super excited about the partnership with our, obviously, NFL teams here at New York State. Facility upgrades. One of the things I think in college that I really enjoyed was, was the facilities. And how can we continue to make our facilities and our school a place? and how can we continue to make our facilities and our school places that kids are proud of when they come? Obviously, we have a beautiful school district, look at the room that we're standing in, but how can we continue to improve and get better? So, so just obviously a picture of our high school gym, some of the graphics that we were able to do this year, and some of the comments that our student athletes came into my office and shared with me. Mr. Rashad, that's sick! Not nasty, I don't know what nasty means, but I guess it's a term of like, they really liked us. Kids taking pictures with their buddies in front of the signage. Just super, super proud of how our facilities look, and again, continuing just to improve. So, some of the upgrades, we did new wind screens on the tennis court. That is an exact same windscreen that you would find at University of Wisconsin. So, to have our tennis program have those, really, really nice. People were taking pictures during graduation in front of the signage on the tennis court. It was nice to see. And then some different areas throughout the school that we've kind of added our, our touch and our logo. I love the pride to be an Eagle, it's something that is, is nice. One of the reasons the gym area was chosen is we have a lot of our events in the gym, a lot of our assemblies, our major ceremonies are held in the gym, so having that area screwed up a little, I think was appreciated by our student athletes. Another facility upgrade is our dugouts. I know the dugouts were a project that were in the works for a while. I know Ms. Parliament was able to get a contractor to do the concrete, and we soon followed with the dugouts, and having our baseball team have a facility, obviously, that they could go to and be proud, and to have dugouts finally in place. We also have benches that have arrived, that will also be going in. Where you see the benches currently, we have a nice red and gray Hollywood bench for both home and away that are going to be going in for the spring, so the baseball team will be well taken care of. And then the other one is the project of our girls softball field. The girls softball field will have the same exact dugouts setup that the boys do. We're just waiting on the fencing, which is an issue, to go in, and when the fencing is in, just put in that four concrete pads and get those dugouts and those things put into our, our facility. Our weight room. Our weight room, if anyone goes to gyms, weight training has changed drastically over the last ten years. It's not, put a lot of weights on a bench, and that's what we do. There's a lot of different polymetrics that go into weight lift and course training. So, how do we keep our athletes on the cutting edge of that training? It's providing them with the equipment and the training to be able to do that. So, now that we have the equipment, how can we better train our coaches to utilize that equipment to better train our athletes? And I think having that ability to offer this to our students, when I give people tours of our school, they are amazed at our weight room, at our gym, our facilities. But again, how do we continue to push the pace to be better each and every year and offer more to our student athletes? So, this was a wonderful opportunity to, to upgrade our weight room. Another big lift this year. Last year was my first year here. My first experience with the athletic department was fall registration. Fall registration consisted of people coming in and filling out paper forms. Those paper forms typically took people twenty to thirty minutes to fill out. They'd have to wait in line. When they got to the front of the line, if it wasn't correct, they had to start over. The average wait was over an hour, over an hour to register their student athletes. So, what we did is we partnered with Final Forms. This is a company that does student registration for athletics. They're also a school tool competitor. They're a company that does student, the student management system for many school districts. Although a heavy lift, again, our current wait time in fall registration this year using Final Forms was under eight minutes. So, we went from over an hour to under eight minutes. With any new platform, we're learning by the day the different functionalities of this. The other piece to this is parents getting used to it. Okay, there's a, there's a, a learning curve with any new platform, but we were able to operationalize the auditorium, and I think the flow of traffic went well, and student registration improved drastically. And then highlighting student success, I think, being able to build connections with the news outlets in our community and being able to showcase our athletes. I can't tell you the times that I talked to WPTZ or Fox News or The Press Republican or the Sun Community News, and they don't know about these events that are going on in your district. They want to cover it, but they don't know about it. So, how do you build those partnerships and collaborate with them to get them here on campus to be able to highlight our student athletes, our facilities and the things that we do? So, these are just a few pictures. NBC came and did a Friday Night Lights special here at Beaventown. You can see Brady Manix being interviewed there, and Nate Parliament and Coach Lozier being interviewed prior to the game, all live on TV. So, just great experiences for our kids. Grace McCaslin, when she achieved her hundredth point, again, wonderful opportunity for her to be able to celebrate that success. And then Kate Knight, which I shared with you earlier, which the news came to cover. And then lastly, professional girl to my end. The past two years, I was able to obtain my athletic administrator certification, which is a certification on top of my administrator certification. This was my classmates who took the courses with me. We had a culminating event down at Albany. So, continuing to learn, continuing to evolve, continuing to take the things I learn in these programs back to Beaventown, hopefully make that document that I don't need a lot to all of us, a read on. And then last but not least, continuing to do what we do to inspire the next generation of Eagles. This was a gift from my son to me, my birthday. This is my son Blake sitting on our field the year before he came here. Blake was a first year student here at Beaventown, and he's proud of being here. And I see the joy when he comes to games, how proud he is, he's a part of the school district, and I'm hoping all of our student athletes and our students feel the same. Any questions, Mr.? I just felt strongly you saw the images are more powerful than any chart.
You see enough financial art. You see enough financial art, so.
Yeah, this was very nice.
It's great.
Any other questions, Mr. Rashad?
Is there anyone here for public comment? All right. Next section, reports. You're up first, you're good?
The only other piece I wanted to mention is, I'll drop this in with enrollment data in the direct email and then drop it into the portal. I don't think there's an awareness of this, but there should be. Not asking for people to be happy about this at all, but it's something that's, looks like it's moving forward at the state level. And there's actually some people in the legislator, legislature of New York that want to ban all long-term suspensions of students and ban all suspensions at certain elementary levels. So, this, what I'm giving you is actually written today, and it's just, it's how some superintendents are speaking out against the idea of the Board of Regents or the New York State Legislature banning suspensions as a tool for discipline. So, it's just, if, if those are things that can happen to us that we would have to enforce that are outside our control, not, not everything we do we like, but sometimes we do things because it's what the law says. And that's, that one, that's got a decent chance of becoming law. That's all I have.
Anything else, Tim, that you didn't already cover? All right, great. You're up, sir.
All right. So, I will start with the high school. The Beaventown High School students demonstrated huge success in the second quarter of the hundred and twelve securing high honor roll with distinction, which would be ninety-five and above, and a hundred and thirty on honor roll, which is ninety-two, ninety-four, ninety-nine, and one hundred and thirteen on honor roll, which is eighty-five. So, it's a total of three hundred and fifty-five students proceeding honorable accolades in HPA of eighty-five or higher. The Beaventown students that attended H-Mon in Boston, where they debated among over four thousand students from sixty-three different countries. H-Mon's one of the most elite international model UN conferences students can attend. Our students represented North Korea as well as Mexico, debated a variety of topics from vaccine diplomacy to nuclear proliferation. A big congrats to Cameron Danville, April Seacor, Seamus Devoe, Estefania O'Leary Peza for winning honorable mentions and awards for their skills. Good job for every student that participated, as well as a big thanks to our advisor, Ms. Hillary Sponable. And our DHS English Department and high school administration collaborated and determined that all students currently enrolled in English eleven and slated to take the English Regents exam in June would participate in the January Regents Administration on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth. The team felt that having students take the early exam in January provides our students an opportunity to sit for a Regents exam, where their exposure to such exams has been like super limited during the course of the pandemic. So, it's kind of enabled our students to see and experience an exam, pardon me, see and experience an exam that is a graduation requirement twice this year, pardon me. Finally, it provides our teachers with individual data that can drive instruction for the spring semester. The results on the exam were outstanding, one twenty-five of one thirty-two passed the exam with a ninety-five proficiency rate, and seventy of the one hundred and thirty-two students scored at eighty-five percent or higher. Moving on to the middle school, February update, on January thirteenth, BMS held our spelling bee, and they'd like to congratulate the winners. The school-wide champion, the school-wide champion would be Tyler San, eighth grade champion and eighth grade runner-up, Miss Cal Anderson, and McKenna Eadie, seventh grade champion and seventh grade runner-up, it's Tyler San and Easton Whalen. And sixth grade champ and sixth grade runner-up will be Leah Rini and Gianna Carlo Russo-Ronantes. Our champions did an outstanding job representing BMS at the Regents Spelling Bee held Monday, February thirteenth. Additionally, BMS would like to recognize Chloe Davies for her poem, getting her poem Salt Wind published in the twenty-twenty-two Young Writers Anthology and Power. This upcoming week, we are participating in the National Random Acts of Kindness Week. Each day, students are encouraged to make a Random Act of Kindness. Miss Barkley's eighth grade class had the opportunity to hear Vladimir Moats' Return to Auschwitz, ask a few questions of the film crew, and listen to a presentation by a hollow gun survivor. In other news, the All County Winners Music Festival was held on Saturday, February fourth, in twenty-twenty-three, at Northeastern Clinton High School. We are so proud of our middle school student musicians. Our students were selected to perform in this prestigious group of the finest musicians in Clinton County, based on the previous NISMA experience and an audition. The conductor learned from and performed under hail, pardon me, performed under hail from across New York State, an experience they will not soon forget. BMS invited to announce that we had a hundred and ninety-five students achieve honor roll, eighty-six on honor roll for quarter two. February fifteenth, students who had great attendance rates and behavior are invited also to an ice cream social in the library or in the library. Also, BMS had two robotics teams compete in the first Lego League competition of this past weekend at Clarkson University. Students worked collaboratively to solve an annual challenge centered around a yearly theme. The series theme was superpower, to explore where energy comes from and how it's distributed, stored and used. We had two teams, Team Superior Sound, which shows how loud middle school can get as their project. Team Energy Surfers, who looked into how moving water can produce energy and proposed using water wheels to collect energy in unconventional places. That wraps it up for BMS. Moving on to CHES, February brings a lot of fun for CHES. A hundredth day, we celebrate at the primary level, with students bringing one hundred day projects. For those now familiar, students bring in projects containing one hundred items of a certain thin, Valentine's Day additionally, and also a special in the elementary school. Students, Student Council, pardon me, partnered with Lake Champlain Track, to sell heart-shaped lollipops for loved ones. Also, fifth graders enjoyed a day of skiing at Tides Mountain. Students were able to learn the basics of skiing while enjoying the time outdoors. Remarkably enough, the majority of students progressed to using the chair. This opportunity was made possible through the yellowed rainforest. And lastly, for CHES, on February eighth, Temple Ahead utilized the Raptor Alert system for a lockdown drill with students in the building. Previously, a week-long drill was set up in order for staff to learn how to use the system. The drill only drew thirty percent participation, however, the drill held on the, pardon me, however, the drill held on the eight yielded almost eighty percent participation from faculty and staff in the building. Many thanks to Gary Lambert and Robert Benware for the Department of Creative Century. And BDS. At BDS, we've started a new incentive for our students called Pizza with Principles. On Thursday afternoons, the cafeteria monitors inform us which class has followed the four Bs, the B's, that week. So far, we've enjoyed time in Ms. Miller's and Mr. Knight's room, Mr. Fish and Mr. Factor's room, pardon me, Mrs. Factor's room and Mrs. Drummond's. Tomorrow is the one hundredth day of school. Student projects have begun coming in, from one hundred mismatch socks to Styrofoam bugs with one hundred legs. Students' projects are displayed for all deceased or adults. Additionally, session six of BaaS started last Monday. Tonight, I'll highlight two grades for you. Grade two, students are enjoying offerings of sensory bins, glorious games, construction junction, rainbow looming and bead, craft corner and icon bow. Grade four enjoys cooperative games, diamond painting, snap circuits, outdoor adventures, creation station and the science of your body. A professional development opportunity is now being offered titled Zones of Regulation. Teachers that have signed up for this will now, will learn how to embed these ideas into their classrooms to support the social emotional learning of students in a productive way that empowers students to identify how they feel. And lastly, we are excited about our Little Eagles in Training ELT. This offers, this offer is for our youngest eagles. They're focusing on strength, endurance, balance, coordination, motor planning and overall social skills. They do this through obstacle course, games, mini stations and sensory play, all of which are important for school participation in the classroom and even later in the years throughout life, potentially on the fields or courts in our high school sports. That's all I have to say.
Very nice. Thank you. Committee reports, operations.
Okay, we met on February eighth, that was last Wednesday, and we're getting down to the final few on our project that we'll be doing, our capital improvement project. The scope of the project is the construction of seven class, additional classrooms will allow for three K to expand. Six new classrooms are added, and one existing at the end of the corridor will be converted into restrooms and support space. A new twenty-five hundred square foot coal storage facility because it's structured as a transportation facility. Mechanical and other building condition survey identified improvements at both Beaventown and Temple Ahead facilities. A new district YPA system will be procured, due to the $500,000 stimulus fund. That one, we're quite excited about. Demolition of the recently acquired structures at the intersection of Route twenty-two and Amiens Road. Construction of a new parking lot and ADA access points. Playground, basketball court and vicinity of the new addition will be reconstructed and secured with fencing. So, District Y, we've been experiencing problems with the PA systems here at this facility and also, from what I understand, there's been some issues at the Temple Ahead facility. So, we're looking at replacing the whole nine yards. We're going to bring it up to date. The, let's see here, we'll be getting the PA system on state contracts, and that will allow the district to speak and work sooner than if following a design, bid, structure approach. The installation of the system could begin as early as twenty, fall of twenty twenty-three. We also reviewed three different options for financing our capital project. The one that we are leaning towards is utilizing three point seven two five million of fund balance and with a no raise, rise in taxes. So, and there was a couple other ones that we looked at, but that's the one that we're leaning to right now. We have a few little hurdles to go over. We got to get approval from the SEP, our classroom officials, and we, see here, approval will establish the percentage of building aid, the district. And we, see here, approval will establish the percentage of building aid the district will receive back on the addition. The remainder of the project should be near a hundred percent gated at the district's current building aid ratio. We are, we don't have a definitive time for a vote on this. We are hoping that we can get the vote in May outright. So we've got a few little things to go over, but, you know, things are looking really good. We're excited about that. Other things too, you know, we're installing new event toilets. I believe that they're here on property, okay? And we're going to start working on them babies in the spring. And also, we have another project that we want to replace a couple of doors in the elementary building of the school. So we're excited about getting the new toilets in. Let's see. Just a few little specific things. Dan Newton is going to be working with New York State DDC. We're looking at our sanitary, you know, how the source is going to go out of this, and we're seeing if we have the capabilities of handling our overflow for that. Things are looking really good with that. And we have budgeted $200,000 in the project for discharge sanitary work. It was short and sweet and productive.
Nice.
Thanks. Hey, just add on, just because it's a little confusing sometimes, the funding of this. Give you the less than one-minute Soul Saber version. State, the state aid will come in the form of about eighty percent of that project be funded by the state, and will be reimbursed state aid. The remaining portion, we're using what, we're asking the taxpayers to approve one million dollars out of the capital reserve, which is set aside for when you need to fix capital projects, right? So we've set that aside over the years. We're asking them now to spend it on a capital project, like we said we would do. Five hundred thousand out of CERSA funds or COVID relief monies. And then the remaining portion would be out of already approved taxpayer dollars that we have in fund balance. So it's no new cost to the taxpayers because taxpayers have given us either the federal money, no matter how you look at it, all that money is taxpayer money. So that's, that's how we'll fund that. The other thing I just wanted to mention was, and we should have mentioned it earlier, in our budget, our cap outlay project next year is, this year it is the, it is the, the,
It's the event toilets and a couple of doors in the elementary.
And then next year, we're going to try to finish all the doors in the elementary, depending on how we can do that. We did talk previously that that might be a year to do, to expand the Cumberland Head generator. In these three buildings, the generator kicks on, and our buildings barely even notice that, that, that the power was off. Cumberland Head, we're going to expand that as a point of order to the principal of Cumberland Head. At Cumberland Head, we're going to expand that without the capital reserve because we found a cost effect, I think, as we found a cost-effective way to expand that generator. That's what I got.
Committee of nine, who's presenting on that?
Hello.
Andre.
So the committee of nine actually ended up meeting twice. We met on December twenty-first and February seventh. First off, I'd like to thank the staff members, the administration members, the board members that joined on both, that joined on those dates. The meetings were incredibly productive. And the overarching goal for those meetings was to be able to discuss, you know, issues, concerns, and discuss them in respect of the manner. And I think the overarching comment at the end of that was, even though there were some questions about how some of that information was presented, this was maybe the most, the best and most productive committee of nine meetings that had been had. I think the overarching concern that came out of both of those meetings was from staff, and that surrounded teachers' safety. We discussed incidents that are obviously mandated to be reported at like a state level, and, but we also discussed incidents that might not necessarily fall inside of that category. You know, whether it be an incident where a teacher is hit, a kick, threatened, what have you. After those discussions, staff and the administration agreed that there is a recording system for incidents like that that happen. We also agreed on a protocol for how those would be reported, using school tool. The staff agreed that they would, I'm sorry, the administration agreed that they would put out some guidance as to exactly how those situations are to be reported. And the staff also agreed that they would reiterate that to the teachers, counselors, and what have you. I thought it was a great meeting. And like I said, I can't, I can't reiterate enough how much we appreciate the members of the staff and the administration that joined us.
Great. Anybody have any questions for? Minutes. Result that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Motion, please. All right.
Nicole second.
Nicole second. Any discussion, questions on the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. Result that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations dated two fourteen twenty-three. Motion, please.
A motion, Nicole.
Oh, Nicole, John, second. Any questions or discussions on this? All in favor? Aye, motion passes. All right, we have a consent agenda. Personnel, result that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, resignations, termination, and appointments be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
A motion, Patty.
Patty? Second.
Second, Rick.
Rick? Any discussion? Questions, comments on this? Or Dan, if you want to add anything to this? Nope. All right. All in favor? Aye. Consent agenda passes. Miscellaneous. Result that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, side letter of understanding with support staff, senior building maintenance worker, and senior custodial worker be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion, Rick.
Rick? Second.
John.
John. Any discussion? Questions? And we talked about this before in the last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial. Result that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, Plasberg Holiday Inn versus Town of Plasberg, donations, transfers, and disposal of district property be and are hereby approved. Motion, please.
A motion, Nicole.
Nicole, second.
Second, John.
John. Any discussion, comments on this? Everybody see the information already in the portal?
Yeah, help. I hope the information that you received from our attorney was helpful on understanding the Holiday Inn. Please.
Roll call, please.
Padraig Bean.
Hi.
Douglas Beebe.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadwick.
Yes.
Patty Leflem.
Yes.
Ed Marin.
Yes.
Nicole Pupour.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Motion passes. Additional items to discuss.
I have one.
Yes.
So there's, we like giving our kids the opportunities to take college courses. And as such, I came across a partnership at a conference agreement with Grand Canyon University, and it caught my eye because we've hired teachers, like local people, who went back to school, and they did that virtually through Grand Canyon University, and they became teachers, and we've hired them. RCN has been hired in other districts. But we have them here on staff. I know people have done that. And I was interested, like, oh, what's this partnership you have? So I put in front of you, which looks like a pretty good partnership. The reason why I said in front of you is there's, there's, the anomaly to this is Grand Canyon University, like a lot of other universities, is affiliated to a certain type of religion and has certain expectations. And I'm not for a second trying to say that we would want anybody who goes to Grand Canyon University to necessarily fall in line with their doctrine. I can tell you, I went to Methodist College. I didn't all of a sudden become a Methodist, right? I was, I was there. They had views on alcohol and chocolate and different things, and I, I, I had my views and I lived my views. We have sent kids to Sienna, and there's Franciscan monks walking all over Sienna. So there's just, there's a lot of different places that St. Mike's is, I think, is a religious institution that we send kids to.
What do you mean, what do you mean we send kids to?
Well, I mean, kids, we, so we send kids to visit sometimes at St. Mike's, but kids choose, kids, we don't send kids to, kids select these institutions to learn from.
It's important to be clear that the institution, PCSD, is not sending.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And we wouldn't, and I'm not for a second saying that we would all of a sudden start sending kids to. Okay, and these would be individual kid choices. I wanted to point out that this particular agreement, there's no cost to us, but we do live in a district that is, has students that have a hard time funding college. And what caught my eye was a thirteen thousand seven hundred dollar, not to exceed thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars for tuition, a couple of different scholarships. The other piece to this, which I do like, and I, is staff can take courses, and like, if you're an aide, you can take courses and you can get into their program and become a New York State certified teacher or a sort of New York State certified teaching assistant. And Lord knows, we need some of those in Clinton County. And it just goes, like, and people could take credits for fifty-two fifty an hour, or fifty-two fifty a credit hour, which is a, which is a solid rate. So I put this in front of you as something, I didn't want to just say, oh, we're going to have this partnership with this religious institution. It's an accredited institution. Their basketball team made the NCAA Division One tournament, so it's, it's a legit institution. There are some benefits to the community, but there is an affiliation with Christian beliefs, and they have, and they, I'm sure they have beliefs on, you know, strict religious things that I don't want to really discuss. So I don't know, I'm, I'm asking the board, how do you feel about, do you like, do you want to bring this opportunity to staff, community, parents, students? Not that we would be saying they're coming here to teach any classes, but there is opportunity for kids, if we have this partnership, that wouldn't otherwise exist.
Do we?
This is a private school.
Yep.
Do we, do we have any kind of guidance from our attorneys regarding the religious component?
In what way?
Well, because we're not supposed to, as a secular institution, we're not supposed to advocate or promote a particular religion. So do we expose ourselves in any way?
So the question to ask an attorney?
Is, are we allowed to do this?
Are we allowed to do this? Yep.
Because, and if we're going to be pragmatic about this, so the document that we have in front of us says, "With the university's commitment to provide an affordable, private, Christian education." So that's, that's part of the document. So just being complete, if instead, instead of saying Christian education, they said another religious education, you know, how would you feel about that? And I'm not talking, not to be ridiculous, but it could be anything from
Methodist to, to Satanism, to, to Wiccan, to, I don't, I'm just being complete.
It sounds ridiculous, but, you know, these are conversations that have been had all over the country with, with public institutions where people want to push one doctrine and then get forced to push to allow all the other doctrines.
But are we pushing doctrine, or are we just giving the opportunity for this institution?
That's, that's a good question. That, and that's the question you have to have, because if you do offer this opportunity, if someone doesn't have this religion, you have to offer that opportunity in a different way. Right? I mean, if you, if you come from a different background, and now your peers have this opportunity to go do this, and you don't follow this religion, are you by default dismissing their opportunity? Or making, segregating them from that opportunity? This is, this is one of the conversations that would be good to have with the, with NISMA and some attorneys because we've seen this before. It's, you know, you said CVS was looking at, they decided not to do this?
I was wondering if this, any of these, these funds could be coserable, through a coser, and, or if any other of the, and they said, and Amy Campbell said no, she didn't want to.
And which college is this again?
Grand Canyon University.
So they said no because of that?
I don't know why she said no, like, I ain't a brandy, but.
So, well, you know, it's up to the board. I just want to make sure that we understand our boundaries when it comes to, obviously, it's a great opportunity to be able to educate kids. Do we, do we have these kind of offerings? I mean, our kids have cap, right? Is there anything here that's being offered that we don't already offer in a different way?
Say that again? Is there anything here being offered?
Is there anything here?
Yes, there'd be things, there's a lot of things in this, in agreement in the front page that would be offered that we don't currently, this is a unique agreement. Like, we don't have an affiliation with an institution. And again, it would be a parental decision, and with it, or a student decision, however, these decisions are made in the home. For instance, to go to, go to this institution for a set dollar amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. As somebody who's sending their kid to college, like, that's, that's not a bad
No, it's a great.
Right.
It's a great thing. It's a, it's a question of, are they going to impose?
Their religion there? I mean, that would be, when you visit the college, that'd be something you want, would, I would recommend that you would evaluate if they're being imposed, if religious doctrine is being imposed on all the twenty-two thousand kids or whatever the number is that go there. I don't know. I haven't gone there. I don't want to speak about it. I could go there and evaluate that, if you want me to. But there's a lot of other things. And then there's, there's benefits in this agreement for staff to take courses at a lower rate to help improve their, there's professional development courses, there's free training courses. Those are the things that caught my eye. It also caught my eye, and that's why it's here, that this is a Christian, a Christian education school. And when I go through that mentally, I say, okay, that's different. Paul Smith, Clinton Community College, Plasberg State, and, and our AP courses aren't a Christian institutions, but we're not offering those courses, right?
Right.
We're just saying, if you wanted to go to this Christian institution, like you mentioned, it's an opportunity. And even if I was, like I, like I mentioned to you, when I go through that, I said, I went to a Methodist institution. I didn't feel like they imposed anything on me, and I had my freshman year of education there, and it was memorable and good. So, um.
Do we partner with any other institution?
No, this is a unique partnership. I've never seen anything like this before. Another reason why it probably caught my eye.
So are we voting on whether or not we're going to go in a partnership? I don't think a New York State college should be in a partnership with a town of state Christian private college. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I was looking for opinions. Yep, that's all.
That is my opinion. I share that.
I think my concern
I think my concern would be what the school's viewpoint is on, are students forced to follow their values, or the, the, the values of one particular religion? And I think that's something that we should have, we should have better understanding of before we poke your name on this.
I'm, I'd like to find out if we can even have this conversation.
Agreed.
I have no interest in the conversation.
No, I, I hear you. You, you could always get, it's difficult because you see the dollar value and opportunity. That's, that has, that's, that's great. But we have limitations as to, I don't care how good it is. If someone comes to our door and says, we're going to give every kid all this money, but they have to do this. You can't, right?
I mean, it came with options, and it wasn't just one set thing, you know? We had a group of colleges that wanted to partner together, say, three or four. A kid could actually choose instead of saying just a Christian one.
Well, and that's why I was, uh, that's why I was, my response to Rick is, maybe we should consider, look at if we have, if we can find other opportunities that are similar to this through some avenue that allows us to have multiple partnerships of institutions around the country, and this is an option, then that allows us. That's a different story, right?
I hear you.
It's no different than, than the winter holiday, you know, concert stuff. You can't, you cannot promote just one.
Thank you.
So Dan, maybe, maybe let's, uh, if the board agrees with this, maybe we get some feedback from our attorneys, from NISBA, and maybe see if we gets.
Do we want to, do, do we want to expend that money if, if it's, if it's hard no's? Like, if it's hard no's, it's hard no's. If it's, if it's hard, if, if the board, if the attorney said, oh, yeah, you can be, like, I know there's other partnerships. That's why they were at this, that's why they were there. They were talking to other superintents. I know there's other partnerships out there. If the attorney says yes, there's, are we, are we just spinning our wheels? Would, would that change your mind?
If there are other partnerships, why don't we have those here?
No, no. Other schools that are engaged in this partnership, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that I've never seen any, as I answered Chris, I've never seen this partnership before. So my question is, do we want to expend the money and go through that if we're still like, no, we don't want to do this? Like, I, I accept no. I, I work for the board. I accept no. It's fine.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I think I'd like to understand, like, from a legal perspective. And like you said, you know, isn't something that we can't and can't do? And if it is, I think this, we, it should be open for progress, you know?
I, I'd like to, I'd like to, I mean, this is, got opportunity. I'd like to, like Chris mentioned, see if there's any, anything else out there.
More than just one opportunity and one, one option for the kids.
Right. And I don't, I don't want to dismiss opportunities to some kids who could take and benefit from this, or staff. But I think it would be worth the effort.
Have we ever done this before?
First time I've ever seen anything like this.
Any like thoughts?
I think it's kind of important that we're not in a, uh, the perception is that we are promoting this as an institution rather than promoting it as an opportunity. You know, it needs to be, you know, where a parent and student can make up their mind if they want to do this. I don't think we, as a district, should be seen as, you know, we're going to promote a Christian person.
And, and so that's why it has to be an opportunity for everybody.
Right.
And it, and if you have a different background, this is not an opportunity for.
But, but we don't know that it's not necessarily an opportunity for people with different backgrounds. Just because it's a Christian school doesn't mean that people have to follow the Christian faith when they go there. There's plenty of schools where they don't. Um, so it's not necessarily taking the opportunity away from one and giving it to another. My question is, from a legal standpoint, are we allowed to partner with a religious school? I don't know.
Yeah, good question. Yep.
I will do the work, sorry.
Do we want, I apologize. Uh, do we want to spend the money to investigate this? Or is this, is the board made up its mind?
Or if you could get more programs like this on board, the offers, instead of just the one specific, it'd be a real investment.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
I agree with that. I just have never seen, this is the first time I've ever seen this. So I haven't seen anything else other, like this. If I see it, obviously it'll catch my eye.
I mean, I think it's a great opportunity, but you can't, we can't just come with saying, all right, we can offer this, but it's going to be a Christian-based education, whether you believe it or not.
Right.
You got to come to it with more than one option if you're going to people go to it.
You said that there's other schools.
But again, I think we need, we need to understand what the school's viewpoint is on students who don't follow their faith going to the school. We, just because it's a Christian school, we don't know what other students' exposure is to the, to that particular religion. We, we need to know more about how the school functions, okay?
So like.
And if it's unique for us to partner with them.
So just to move it, my understanding along, so like, that'd be like at St. Lawrence. There's, is it, is it like going to St. Lawrence or another affiliated school with a, with a religious belief? Is a question like, as of a Jewish student went there, do they have to convert or do they have to, like?
No.
I mean, what, I don't know. I just want to understand what am I asking?
We just don't want to look biased, pushing just towards one.
I don't know, I don't know what our legal boundaries are. And, and if we choose to do, and even if we can, are we limiting other people because of different faiths?
Well, I, I went to a Catholic college and they're, they're all there, you know, every denomination.
I went to a Catholic elementary, but it, but that doesn't mean that, and it's easier for us to say because we're a majority. But if we have, you know, we had an incident here several years ago where we had a kid who came from a Jewish faith and they, they were only doing a holiday, it was all Christian. And a grandparent came to me, why is my grandchild only singing Christian songs? So, so, so sometimes by default, even though the majority is okay with it, you are preventing other people from being a part of the group, or you're ostracized. So, so you, we have to be aware of everybody. Yeah, that's all.
You said there's other schools that have partnered?
Yes.
That you're aware of?
Yes.
And have, are you familiar with any, um, issues or concerns with those other schools doing so?
Um, I haven't dug in on the, on that. Like, are you, they definitely have partnerships with other schools. So I'll ask who those other schools are and I'll call them.
I said, I, I agree with Rick. It's an opportunity. I don't, I mean, it doesn't matter what you say or do. Somebody's going to be offended, I'm sure, but it's an opportunity presented and the student and the family have the, have the choice to make.
Bingo. Or the staff member. We have staff members we've hired who are using this institution to accumulate credits. So that they could save 25% and use that money to pay for gas or something. I thought that was a decent opportunity.
But that's not being paid by the state. That's being paid by them.
What do you mean by paid by the state?
Who's, who's paying for that?
The individual.
Right, exactly. The state pays us to educate kids. This is being paid by the state, and this is why it's sec, it's secular. It's a very different, it's a, who's funding it, right? If I'm sending my kid to Notre Dame, I'm paying for it.
Right.
The state's not paying for it. That's the difference.
But there's no cost to us. I don't understand what we're paying for.
It's not the point.
Okay. I'm, I will ask the attorneys. I'm going to ask the attorneys.
It's the buildings being paid by the state, the institution, the overhead. It's, this is, this is by the state.
Okay.
So could we ask the attorney that we have an $85,000 retainer on instead of asking the attorneys that we pay 2.50 an hour on?
We can certainly ask Tony to investigate this.
Yeah, we could go to NISBA as well.
I just think.
Yeah. I agree. More to look, more to look at. All right. March agenda. Bozey's vacancy. Is this?
So it's, it's up again? Your seat's up again?
Yeah, yeah. All right, so. So next month we get to vote for, whether you want me to be on the Bozey's board or not, or if somebody else wants to do it.
So we, Beeman Town has one seat on the Bozey's board. Ed is traditionally taken at C. I imagine Ed wants to do it again?
Yeah, okay. Unless somebody else is really eager to do it, be a part of it. I'm happy to hand it out. Go to your guys.
Then that will be on the, there's some process involved in, and then that will be on, that's part of the?
Yearly vote.
The vote.
Yeah. Anybody here for public comment? All right? Clerk pro temp, we, we're not going to executive session again, so we don't need that. We finished the executive session early. Germany, correct? Result that the Board of Education adjourned the meeting at 7:55. Motion, please. Rick? Second?
Second.
Chris? Questions, thoughts, rights? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.